We would like to call this meeting, as of January 28th, to order. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance, please. My allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the recognition of visitors. As you all can see, our table has expanded a bit today, and I'd like to invite our mayor here, who's with us today, and Ms. Conabere, and Mr. Coughlin, who were part of the A D C Commission. From the first time the Commission convened, we'd said we would like to do these kind of meetings where we would kind of do some things jointly together, so it's a pleasure having you all here, and we will hear from you in a little bit. Thank you. We're here with the hearing of the public. Now, there's going to be two, just so you guys can get a little housekeeping here, there's going to be two hearings of the public. So after we get through our initial agenda, we're going to open it up for a conversation that we can have. So anyone who wants to come to the first hearing of the public, you can now, but once we start that conversation, it's going to roll on. And as you come to the microphone, just because we have some new faces, please state your name and address.
Hi, I am Jay Pickering. I am the President of Lorraine Education Association and represent the teachers here in Lorraine. At the last meeting, I presented some information about teacher attendance to the Board. In what he calls his Titan Touch Points, the CEO had pointed out that the teacher attendance was very poor last year, and I brought to light information from public records requests, which indicated it is not. It was pretty good last year. Even if you look at the state report card, we're at, what, 94.5%. While talking about that, I was asked by you, how is attendance this year? And at the time of the meeting, I didn't have the information. I'd actually already requested it, and so I'm standing here very proud of the teachers of Lorraine. I think the CEO has represented us as being very poorly attended teachers. In the newspaper, he's quoted as saying that, and this was based on a meeting towards the end of December, "On any given day, there can be as many as one in four teachers absent." Hardy said. He said, "The district has very high teacher absenteeism." On school days, Hardy said, "His email box is filled with notices about substitute teachers." Also, at his, I think it was his community forum, Oris Noah's Town Hall in November, he spent quite a bit of time talking about how bad teacher attendance was. So I'm very proud, because I have the data right here. Teacher attendance, only 4% of teachers call off sick any day, according to the information provided by the district to me. All right? That equates to what's called 96% attendance. All right? He has also talked a lot about, and by the way, that is 18.6 teachers absent every day. We have 474 teachers in this district, and 19, we have 14 buildings. So that sounds to me like there's just a little over one teacher absent due to illness in any given building. The CEO has also talked about how many substitutes they need. I think at one point, he mentioned as many as 80 per day. Actually, according to the data provided to me by the district, we had 91 days in the first semester, and we have an average of 26.3 subs needed a day, according to the information they gave us. So in the City of Lorraine, or the Lorraine City Schools, for 14 buildings, 475 teachers, they have to find 26.3 subs every day. That's including all reasons, by the way. Because just for teacher absences, for illness, they only need to find 18.6 subs a day. Okay? And we have 475 teachers in this district. Okay? There are actually fewer teachers absent in one building than, you think about it, we have a high school with 120 teachers there. So our average is probably about one teacher a day in every building. All right? And maybe three at the high school. Okay? So I am very proud to say that teacher attendance is good this year, despite what everybody hears in the media. Okay? And I just wanted to make sure you folks were aware, I know you'd asked me that question last time, I didn't get an opportunity to answer.
Thank you.
My name is Rhoda Lee. I live at 22, I mean, 1409 West 22nd Street, Lorraine, Ohio. I'm here today, I want to take you back, because what I see happening in my community is becoming divided over something that should have been dealt with a long time ago. In 2009, and you were there, I stated, and we all thought about this coming about, and the House Bill 70. And what I see is you're directing things at individuals instead of what the issues are. And the issues are in your state legislator, those people who you elected to sit in the State House and make these decisions. They made this decision for House Bill 70 to come, they passed it, no one, I wish all of the people in here now were there then, and we tried to get it together, to go to Columbus and said, "No, we don't want it." And I have stood before you all before and stated, I think the House Bill 70 is unconstitutional. It is a taxation without representation. And I say that that's where the issue is. I don't like it when you begin to go toward individual, let's deal with what the real problems are and the issues. Let's deal with what our kids need, and they are needed. Some of the statistics that were cited were here, they were cited by Dr. Graham prior to him not being here. We do have those problems. We have kids in our district who are coming to school traumatized for other reasons, no other reason than they need more parental, and we need more parental accountability in our school district. And we need the resources, nurses and others, that we need in our school district. We need to stop this hammering and jammering and this hatefulness, and it is what it is, it's hate. And it's no good. They went through a process, and we talk about Dr. Hardy, it was a process that they went through, the state went through, in order for him to be here. There were meetings held, and they had, I think it was five or six candidates who were here, who they had decided that they wanted to interview, and who would be up for the position. Based upon that, that's why Dr. Hardy is here. Here to fore, before, you didn't have any community forums where parents and people came to give their input as to what they wanted to see in their school district. That's what needed. Stop the bickering. Come together. Do what you have to do. You think House Bill 70 was bad? I don't know where it is in the committee, but this is House Bill 512. Am I correct?
Yes.
And if you see House Bill 512, it has nothing, doesn't it, Ms. Demakia, to do with House Bill 70. It's worse, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Let's focus on what is real. Let's stop this foolishness. Yes, we have good teachers. As with everything in life, you have good and you have bad. So let's deal with the good. And until we do that, it's not going to come, because I'm saying you're dividing this community with what's going on now. And it's time for all of us to stop it. What's important is these kids, and you better believe it, there are some of these kids out here watching us. They're watching you, to see what you're going to do. So let's find out, okay? Let's go then, ask the state to come in and tell us, tell the teachers what your duties are, what Mr. Hardy's duties are, and what the duties of the state is. Because if this keeps up and this comes about, you won't have anything to do or say about what happens within your school district. It will become privatization of our school systems, and that is the national, it's not just Lorraine. This is becoming a national trend. Ms. DeVos, who has been here into the state of Ohio and have said, corporations build up charter schools where it will be private, then they'll make the decision which kids will be going and which kids won't. So let's stop the hate, and let's communicate.
Hello, my name is Barbie Washington. I live on Riverside Drive in Lorraine. My name is Barbie Washington. I live on Riverside Drive in Lorraine. I wanted to ask the Academic Distress Commission members if there has been a meeting scheduled in the near future. I know the last one on the 21st was canceled.
March 26th is the next one.
March 26th is the next A D C meeting on the schedule.
There was a special meeting called, there's urgency, but nothing sooner.
There's been nothing sooner since the cancellation of the 21st.
Do we know anything about a replacement for our chair, Mr. Richardson, since he resigned?
We've not heard any information regarding a replacement of Mr. Richardson.
Have you received any of the information that you requested from Mr. Hardy or the administration?
I have not. I have not.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now that, so for this meeting, we do have a reasonable thought, that it'll be three minutes, your questions will be held to three minutes, and because this is a Lorraine City School Board meeting, we're going to ask that any questions are directed to us, because the entire A D C is not here. Now, as a community leader, if they decide that they want to engage in some of those conversations and respond, you guys are welcome to do that. But this is a school board meeting, and I would like for you guys to direct all your questions to the Board through the chair. Thank you. So we're going, okay?
No?
No, you can come on in a second? Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and get through the rest of our agenda, so we can then open up and do some formal introductions, and we can hear from our guests. Approval of the last minute?
Motion to approve the approval from the last minute.
Support. Roll call?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Any old business?
Yeah, I have one piece that I know we have been discussing, our meeting and our meeting dates, and they have been set in the organizational meeting, however, in light of some of the other meetings that have been scheduled on the same day and time as our board meeting, I would like to make a motion to move our Board of Education meetings to Tuesday evening at 5:00, right here in the same facility, if we could possibly do that, if there are no.
First and fourth, which Tuesdays?
Keep it, keep it second and fourth, just like we could. Yep.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I support.
The motion has been supported. So you all know, our meetings are the same days as our city council, and sometimes you all want to go to both places, sometimes the media can't be to both places, so we're trying to put ours in a place where everybody can go to all those meetings and be part of the community. So that's why that motion is on the floor.
So that's a motion to walk it on. We'll vote to get it walked on, and then we'll vote for the actual.
Correct. Motion seconded. Roll call?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Now I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Support.
Support.
Roll call?
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Recommendations from the treasurer?
I have none at this time.
None at this time. Any recommendations from the CEO?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of. Is there any new business? Any committee reports? Now we're back to our second hearing of the public. And with that, the mayor's come to visit with us today, and as you all know that he's had the opportunity to make another appointment to the Academic Distress Commission, so I would like to welcome the mayor here, and want to know if there's anything that you could say, and then introduce your new appointment, and please address us.
Sure. Well, through the chair, thank you. I don't know who wants to go to both school board and city council meetings out there, but knock yourselves out, whoever is amongst you. You know, I'm happy to be invited here. I was invited to a distress commission, I think it was in 2017, one of the first ones, and was happy to attend, and if invited to a future distress commission meeting, I will be happy to attend that as well. But, you know, I'm here, as you know, I've appointed Diane Conabere-Exander as my appointment to the Academic Distress Commission. I think she brings a wealth of experience, wealth of knowledge, and in my opinion, is trying to get to the crux of a lot of what is going on within our schools. And I say that because, you know, at least recently, I think a lot of what's going on in the schools has come to a fever pitch, and is not good for our community. We are in a position now where, as we move forward, if something is not done or changed, I think, I fear, it could be irreversible. And I have to say, though, that regardless of whether it's Diane, whether it's Steve, whether it's any of the three appointees by the state superintendent, these five people appoint the CEO. They are the appointing authority of the CEO. When one of them asks for information, when one of them requests a meeting or wants time, they ought to get it. And when that doesn't happen, whether it's my appointee or not, I have an issue with that. That has to change. I think what we see here tonight should be extrapolated out. I would like to see, in terms of unity, a school board meeting and a distress commission meeting, a joint meeting. I think that would be good for our community. I think it'd be good to have our principal players there, including the CEO, because to me, unless we go that route, I think we're just going to keep spinning our wheels. I would also like to say that I think a challenge with this piece of legislation, and, you know, Ms. Lee, to your points, you're absolutely right. My issue in much of this is House Bill 70, which started as a piece of legislation for wraparound services, and was amended to suck in the Lorraine City Schools, along with Youngstown, into what is going on now, which, by the way, East Cleveland is advertising for a CEO, and you've got at least 10 school districts ready to fall into this. The problem is that you start to remove layers of accountability, which is why, when my appointee is rebuked, it is especially troubling, because when you think about it, as the mayor of your community, I am accountable to you. I'm directly elected. My appointee comes from a directly elected position, whether I'm the mayor or anybody else is the mayor. The mayor is a directly elected position. The three state appointees, keep this in mind, are appointed by the state superintendent, who is appointed by the governor. By the way, the CEO is appointed by the appointed distress commission, who's appointed by the appointed state superintendent, who's appointed by the governor. You want to talk about accountability, you know, I think the best accountability, and quite frankly, there's precedence for this, Mayor Jackson, Cleveland, felt the best accountability, was the Cleveland plan and the way it was structured. Looking ahead, I know I've heard so many different things and so many different sides of this, my number one goal is to see this community move forward. The schools cannot remain in the situation that they're in. You want to talk about academic distress, if we don't figure out a way to get confidence amongst our school board, who is a player, I want to say, the school board, this notion that the school board is powerless is absolutely false. The school board is a player, and they ought to be treated like, you know, they have the responsibility, they ought to be treated with the respect they deserve, because they are responsible for putting a levy or a bond issue on the ballot. You want to talk about real problems, if this academic piece isn't handled, and we continue down this path where there is no trust, and a levy doesn't go on the ballot, then we're going to be in a real world of hurt. So I would say, my recommendation to the CEO, to everybody here, is we ought to do this more often. You know, if the distress commission and the Board will meet, and Mr. Hardy will attend, I will attend as well, and let's get everybody together, and stop having these fights in the newspaper, or, you know, "We're at this meeting, I'm at this meeting." This room's big enough for everybody. I say we do it. Thank you.
And I would like, your appointee, would you like to have a remark?
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I want to thank the Board members for extending the invitation to us as well. You know, I spent 14 years in the school district, I had three children that went through the school district, had a phenomenal education. We did some amazing things back in the day at Admiral King and Lorraine High School during the merger and during my time. You know, and 2011, let's not forget, Lorraine High School made the effective rating on the state report card with a 90% performance index rating. We've shown that we can be successful, and we've proven it. I am here to continue on and help the district in a different capacity. And if anybody's ever worked for me, or anybody ever knows me, I am the most positive person that relationships are at the forefront of everything that I do. I get along with people, I want to work together, because that's how we move things forward. And I came in initially, and I've experienced some challenges, I have to be honest. You know, I can't help the district move forward if I'm not given baseline information and data about the district. I mean, baseline information and data. I've received nothing as of today. I've also expressed some urgencies to Mr. Hardy, explained to him that, "Let's get together, let's meet more often," and that I'm not achieving that as well. So it's concerning to me, and I want nothing more than to work together in a cohesive partnership with Mr. Hardy and his administration, because it is not about the adults, it's about the kids, and we need to stay focused on the kids. And I have to say, we put kids first, we can't put teachers last. Teachers have to have buy-in to what's going on, district-wide initiatives, and I will tell you, my biggest concern is the morale in this district amongst its employees. And I'm going to stop there, but I want to thank you again.
Mr. Coughlin, please.
I'd like to echo everything that the mayor and Diane said. And obviously, as a teacher on this commission from the time I was appointed, it's been a very difficult and trying experience for me, because I feel like I've been dropped in the middle of a tornado, because I've got so many things spinning around me. But obviously, as a parent of a graduate of Lorraine City Schools, a proud graduate of Lorraine City Schools, I want nothing more than to see this district become what I know it in some cases already is, but even better, and improve, you know, the test scores and the perception that we have. And it is troubling to see some of the things that have happened, especially, you know, Diane alluded to the morale issues, and some of the things that have been out there publicly in regards to teachers, and some innuendos and things of that nature, that I want to see really not be happening, because the teachers are an important piece of this with the kids. They don't want to feel, I don't want to say a sense of harassment, they want to focus on their kids. They want to come to school every day, they want to be dealing with their students. Some of our students come to school with issues that need to be dealt with. I know this morning, we woke up to a situation at the high school where a student lost a sibling, and the teachers reached out and took up a collection for this family. And those are just examples. There's a few students that are in need of certain things, and the teachers have responded and donated coats and, you know, food items and things of that nature, because teachers care, and they care about the students of Lorraine City Schools. So I hope as we move this process forward, that, again, we all are on the same page, because we do want to see our students become successful, and I think what Diane has asked for is reasonable in regards to the information and data, especially coming new to the commission. I mean, I haven't seen some of these things either, so I think it's just an appropriate request, so I don't think you're really out of line in those responses, and I would hope that you could get, and we could, as an academic distress commission, get those pieces as we move forward. So, again, thank you for inviting us here, and hopefully, we can move this forward in a positive and productive way.
Thank you. So for me, as we just do a little housekeeping here, I never think that there should be a time that a community should not be heard. And though this is not a town hall meeting, we thought it would be important for those who kept calling and reaching out and wanting to have the conversation, and have some questions answered, that we open up and answer some of those questions that we can. And we'll do the best we can, and for those that we can't answer, we're going to get them and try to get you all the answers. That's why I need you to say your name, where you're from, your address, so we can get those questions addressed. But with that, we're going to ask that we be respectful, nobody's attacking anyone, and try to keep those comments to three minutes that we get to hear. And with that, we're opening up the microphone for the public.
Hi, good evening. Bambi Dillon, 228 Delaware Avenue. I just, I have a question for the school board. I had talked to Bill Sturgill about this. I do believe that we have a state board member that covers our district too, and I was just wondering if any of you ever heard of, from this person? I would think we voted somebody in in November, have they stepped forward? They represent us.
I looked it up, and her name is Kirsten Hill, and I, they didn't have an email, that there was no contact information as of right now. Maybe it's, maybe they haven't had a meeting yet, still January.
Did you find out where I said she was from?
She's from Amherst.
She's from Amherst. A step away.
I think we may have an answer for you. Do you have an answer, mayor?
Do you have a?
Yeah, she's from Amherst. I don't have her contact information, but there was a school board meeting, they had an organizational meeting a few weeks back.
Mm-hmm. Well, I was wondering if, like, why she hasn't contacted our school board, because she is a representative, correct, of our district?
We hear more from Merle.
And I would think that she would be involved in what's going on now.
Yeah.
So I would hope that somebody here would contact her. I would hope she would contact us and come to the school board meetings.
Maybe once she sees her name in the paper, she'll.
Don't say that I asked. And also with what the mayor said, I believe I was at a meeting during the summer, was it 2017, when it was stated that the distress committee and the school board would have joint meetings. So I'm glad, I hope to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Valdez. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Speech therapist for Lorraine City Schools. I live on Madison Avenue in Sheffield Lake, so I do not live in Lorraine anymore. I had a couple things to say, one of which, I just kind of wanted to validate Diane's comment about herself and her positivity, because I did work at the high school when she, when those high schools combined. Accountability, she was all about it, getting information for us, open door policy, that was great. I heard a couple scoffs in the audience when she said that about her being positive, and as somebody that worked under her, that's not untrue, she is. The reason that I wanted to step up here, though, was the fact that I attended both the town hall, the last town hall that we had, and then I also attended the City Hall Speak Up, Speak Out Forum at the City Hall, two days after that. And that was opened up by comments indicating that there was an apology to the CEO on behalf of certain groups based on the behavior, or the accusations, or the questions that other groups had asked. And what I'm noticing is that there is very, a very strong pull between races that's going on in Lorraine, and it shouldn't be like that. And to quote somebody just recently on something, was commenting, a friend of mine said, "Information and accountability does not equal hate." If we're asking for information, then that information being nicely asked for, following the correct procedures for it to be asked for, and we're not getting it, then that's not accountability, and that's not honesty. So it's, I just, I'm here as somebody that's been with the district. My dad was in the district in 86, he passed away. My mom worked for the district. It's not about race. I don't care what color my students are, I don't care what color their families are. That doesn't matter to me. What matters is the community and the kids that we teach and we work with. And I'm really tired of the recent race battle, because that's not what this is, and that was never brought up during that town hall meeting, and I don't want that to be the forefront of anything. So I don't necessarily have a question for you guys, but I wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you.
E.G. Rice, 1034 MLK Boulevard, 21st Street. Tonight, I'm representing the N double A C P, as well as myself, as a citizen in Lorraine. My heart is heavy. My heart is heavy. You got, you three musketeers. You started this whole thing, now it's gotten out of hand. My telephone has been jumping off the hook. Racism, Mr. Mayor, is very, getting very strong in your city. I had to tell you that. When somebody's brown, it seems to be in leadership, they don't get respect. You say what you want to say to them, when you want to say to them. And anybody in here that wants to have a problem with the NAACP, then you guys have problems. Because, you know what, the, from the action, the white female Caucasian got more out of that than any of us. So all of you got your jobs and responsibilities because of civil rights. And the NAACP fights racism. All over 100 years, we've been fighting this. Then to see it come together in the city of Lorraine. That city hall, last city town hall meeting was a disaster. I even felt uncomfortable. Now, I grew up in Lorraine, I went through Lorraine School, worked for Lorraine, so my kids went through. I should not feel this way, like we're just like, "Ooh, Mr. Mayor, you got a problem in your city. I'm warning you." Unless things get turned around and people stop. Mr. Hardy, Mr. Hardy, that man is under the state's umbrella, not ours. And he, I think, deserves respect. That's the problem in the city. It just amazed me, all the years when we have Caucasians in position, nobody says a word against them, they don't care what they do. You get someone brown, that's it. I have a problem, y'all, got to fix it.
The mayor, please.
Yeah, you know, I would say that the city of Lorraine wears its moniker well. It is the international city. We are a city that is open to any person, any background, any race. It is one of the most open cities in what I would call some very difficult times going on right now in the United States and in the world. But I would not, and Jean and I, we agree on some things, we disagree on others, but I would say this, disagreement does not amount to disrespect.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Ballard, I have, I've got members of city council.
I mean, I look at my city council, in the last two years, city council's been one of the most diverse bodies of people. I agree with Councilwoman Moon, and I disagree with her. I disagree with Councilwoman Carter on some things. The late Councilman Edwards would go round and round with me on any number of things. But I never equated that with disrespect, they just disagreed with me. And, you know, if the thought is that, because I'm Caucasian, I don't get criticized as mayor, I'll be glad to show anybody the emails and the hate mail I get on a daily basis. So again, I mean, I think the previous comment, it's unfortunate where this has gone, and a lot of the discussion has gone. I think we have to focus on the outcomes. Oftentimes, we focus on the people, and we get siphoned off into these kinds of discussions. Let's focus on the outcomes.
Thank you.
I would just like to add too, as a teacher that's been in the district for 28 years, there have been many superintendents that have been criticized publicly. Some have been almost run out of town publicly, and they were white, okay? The fact that Ms. Sander asked for data and information has nothing to do with the color of Mr. Hardy's skin, it has to do with, I want data and information as we move the district forward. So I would hate to further a narrative that this issue is about race, and make this something more than just the fact that she wants data, that we've asked for data, to help move this district and this community forward. So that's my two cents.
Okay, please, to the podium.
Hi, my name is Margot Higginbotham. I live at 505 West 24th Street, Lorraine, Ohio. I'm a substitute teacher in Lorraine Schools and Alaria Schools. I came back last year into Lorraine Schools after I'd been gone since 2006. I was very disappointed in 2006 with a lot of things that had happened in the district and also to me. Most people that do know me, my license was screwed up. Went to school, spent all this money for my license to get screwed up by David Williams, who was the human resource person at the time. I do not have my license still today, because of that situation, yes. That made Lorraine very, put a sour note in for a long time. When I went into Alaria Schools, a lot of things were different. I established myself. Most people know me, I'm a great sub. Everybody knows me, I speak my mind, right or wrong, and I don't care if you like me or dislike me, if you know me. It's always been like that. I spoke up at the last board meeting we had, when we were trying to elect the new superintendent at the time, when Mr. Tucker was leaving out. And we spoke as far as trying to keep our own out of the district, when Mr. Smith was here at the time, at the old Charleston building. I thought Dr. Hall was an exceptional person to be able to be chosen, but it was very important that Mr. Williams was one of them that was against him being there, and he was about Graham being here. Graham came in, the school district has been screwed up way back then, school's been screwed up back then. But I'm more so speaking about respectability today. That's what I'm in here. And if you know me, I don't got a problem telling any of y'all off. But I've been praying to keep my mouth closed, and not to say things that would be disrespectful for a while. But one thing that I can truly say is, at that last meeting we were at, that was so disrespectful. And the reason why I'm speaking on it, because if it had have been us, we'd have been on the front page. I'm sorry to say that. In this day and time, if it was us acting up, and I'm talking about African Americans acting the way that it was acted, we'd have been on the front page of the papers talking about how we are angry, and the other things that come out when we speak our mind, and we don't speak logically to people. The first thing that comes out of their mind is, "We're angry, black people," and everything else that goes along with it. Now, I can speak on that, because it is a true statement. So I was on Channel 5, and I had a disagreement with someone who had the nerve to tell me it was disrespectful for me to speak as far as parents not doing their job. And I had to go back on Facebook and place out what I had stated, and I had said a whole lot. But in respectability, yes, the parents need to... My daughter graduated in 2009, was on the basketball team, volleyball, track team. This parent didn't miss nothing, was at every conference, asked and requested information on a weekly basis. I didn't get that. But when I pressed on, and I pressed it, I got it. Because I had to learn from other people that I knew what my rights were as a parent, because teachers weren't giving me what I needed for my child. I wanted to know her grades, I wanted to know what was going on, because you don't put in things, and this is true, when I went into Alaria, the one thing that I found out is, the teachers put the grades in every day. That kid knows at the end of the day, before they leave out that class, where they stand at. In Lorraine Schools, it's not like that. I'm sorry to say. I do know that. My niece graduated here, my grand, my nephew graduated two years ago, the first one in Lorraine Schools, to graduate out of this high school. So I can speak from experience, because my kids came out here. I graduated from Admiral King in 1980, I'm old, okay? So, but the point is, is respectability. I see both sides of the story, and I tell this to people every single day, because I'm a sub. I see a whole lot, but I don't say a whole lot. God, I got blackballed before because I talk too much, and I'm hoping that doesn't happen this time. But the thing that I'm saying is, there's both sides of the story. I see both sides. I see the teacher's side, and I see the side that the state placed everybody there. Don't think that it's not there, because y'all do have bad teachers in the system. I'm sorry to say that. I know that. I've been in several classrooms in the past, people have said things to me that I would have never heard people say to me. But I'm not speaking on those, because the good teachers, I know so many good teachers. Ms. Bender was my daughter's fifth grade, fourth grade teacher, third grade. Then we had third grade, Ms. Bender. Then we have so many more that taught my child in school that I had a great relationship with, and I had a great relationship with a lot of teachers here. I'm not speaking about some of those that I know that will go on and beyond the call of duty. Ms. Connerbear was the first teacher, and I still, I love her today, because when it came to me get my degree, I have a master's in special ed, ED, she did SBH. I went to her when she was in Lorraine Middle. How do you handle the kids? I learned a lot from her. Mr. Alvo, another one, I learned a whole lot from him as well. So we have great teachers too, just like we have some bad ones. But wherever it goes, the bottom line is, we have great and bad everywhere it goes. The bottom line is if we have these eagles that we have, we have two eagles on both sides of the bill right now. And the bottom line is, who cares about the kids? Because if it's about the kids, we place our eagles aside. And that goes with Mr. Hardy as well. Don't get me wrong, just because he black don't mean I like him that great either. Don't think so just because he black. He got to do the right thing too, don't think that he don't. Because I expect that out of somebody like that. So when it comes down to right and wrong, for my child, I want the best. I don't have anymore, and I have a grandson now. He wouldn't be in this district, and he ain't, he's not, and he wouldn't be right now. I'm sorry to say that. That's the first of a, out of my family, that does not go in this district right now. And because of the grading system of Hardy's, he don't know what no 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is. I need an S, he got an O right now, when I see, now that's an O, outstanding. I know what that means. I know what a U means. I know what a, uh, 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 an F, all that else. When I was in college, I even know what the, the O, the F, what's the other one?
The W, withdraw?
Yeah, the W, yeah. We got all kinds of O's.
Before you lose your money?
Exactly.
I don't want to lose your point, but...
But the bottom line is, we have both sides that we need to think about the kids. I work up at Lorraine High, and I'm here every single day. And yes, there's a major difference than it was last year when I first came in. But I was shocked when I came last year, because I was just praising Lorraine, because in Alaria, there was always dogging us. I'm like, "Nah, we ain't. Diane got this place together." Then I find out she was gone, and I don't know what's going on, y'all, no more. I don't know what's happening. And I said that, because I do rate you very great. You know, I've always thought that about you, Diane, and I know you're not prejudiced, because you didn't have to bring your kids in this district, because most of these people don't have their kids in Lorraine. So that's a positive for her. So, but to make it point, my point, and to get to what I need to say is, like I stated before, I think that both sides need to start and think about what's best for these kids in Lorraine. Because if it's the kids that we're talking about, then everybody will put their eagles aside to come together. That means Hardy, as well as you guys. You got to come together for the kids. That's the main objective, is trying to do what's kids, because we're losing, there's so many kids that don't have, and we're not talking about before I was poor. We're talking about poor and don't have. I remember having Sunday shoes, clothes, taking, I mean, all kind of different things. But poor, we've been poor. But the difference is educating, so that we have the opportunity to either go to a trade school, you going to college, or you're just going to go out and get a great job opportunity for yourself. These kids need those things, and that's what it's about. I'm sorry if somebody offended some of you guys when I told some of the truths that's out here, but truth is truth regardless. And like I said, I'm not here to bash nobody. I just need everybody to think what's the most important thing, that you have your job. What did you go to teaching for? What was the reason why you decided that you wanted to teach? And then, the same thing for everybody else. Think about the basics. Again, thank you, and you guys have a good afternoon.
Thank you. State your name, and I know you did one the first time, but just so the media knows.
Barbie Washington, I live on Riverside Drive. I would like to address the race issue. It's been said that we are questioning Mr. Hardy, because he doesn't look like us. My husband doesn't look like me. My children don't look like me. I was baptized at Bethany Baptist Church, where I was one of two white people there. My children served on the usher board and praise dance. I was a part of the children's band there. Race has never been an issue, my children come first. I supported Mr. Hardy last year by being on his parent advisory council. I worked on his task force. And when I started asking more questions, when I started hearing more things, he stopped asking, answering questions, we started to do more research, and our concern is the kids. We do volunteer, we do have children that play sports, that are involved in anti-bullying warriors, my daughter was a part of, and most of the children that call me mom, I did not birth, and they do not look like me. I, I think that us being called racist, our kids being talked about by prominent people in our community, is disgusting, and you did not hear anything racial coming from me, or "It takes a village," or "Lorraine tackles House Bowl 70."
My question has to do with Title I. I was hoping Mr. Hardy would be here to answer the question. I know that the, I have read that the deans are being paid out of the Title I money. Teachers have been either let go from the district, or have been put in different areas in different schools. Title I has been taken away. I was told when I went to a literacy night, that they show that Title I pullouts show there's documented cases that it doesn't show any positives. So I was told that the deans are being paid with the Title I money. Is that correct, Mr. Hill? Or the dean of family engagement, correct?
Well, overall, the structure of it is different this year anyways, because of pooling. But yeah, a portion of their salary would be paid out of the 598, which includes title funds.
Okay. And are any of the chief administrators being paid from Title I money? Maybe the chief family officer?
Don't believe so, off the top of my head, but I'll look into it.
Could you check? Yeah, you can see. I guess my question being, since the Title I money is supposed to be used to specifically help children, what are the deans doing in the schools to help the individual children that need help? My daughter was pulled last year as remedial help, twice a week, and she's not getting that help. The teachers aren't getting the help for the students that need the help, they're supposed to do it on their own. So I guess my question being is, I don't know when I can get the answer, but what are the deans specifically doing that warrant them being paid from the Title I money?
Can you give that answer? We will get that answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cara Gomez, and I live at 465 California Avenue, and I have two questions. One, when are more counselors going to be hired for the district? I think school counselors are a huge piece of what we're missing. I asked about that in August, that has not happened, and I think that a school counselor is integral to what our students need. The fact that there's so few at the high school, where students need that support, they need that person that they trust to go to on a daily basis, and they don't have that. Those counselors are bogged down with scheduling, and they need to have somebody to talk to that they trust. We need that more than anything. Second, when will we get a science curriculum? Second, when will we get a science curriculum at the high school that is updated? My son has books that are so outdated that the poor teacher is trying to pull things off of teachers pay teachers. That is unacceptable at this point. So when will we be looking at purchasing a new science curriculum? Thank you.
On the lighter side, the kids go to school too early. They have to be there quarter after seven. They have to get up in the middle of the night and go to school when it is still dark. And this is January, and it's gonna go on for another month or so. So I just think that they should all start the school later. And when I went to high school, we started school at nine o'clock. The kids' puberty at that age makes them have a different sleep cycle and a time to get up is later, and they won't fall asleep in class, they won't be antagonistic, and they will learn more. Also, I've got a big audience here today, so I thought I'd get everybody for that one.
My name is Matt Smith. My address is 217 Idaho Avenue. I'm a longtime resident. I actually graduated from the actual original Lorraine High of '93. And I would like to say thank you to all the teachers that are here. They have done a wonderful job with all my, my children I have. They, they care very, very, very much for them. There's a lot of them that I see here today, principals and teachers, that have affected my kids greatly, and I thank you very much for that. The question I have is that the, back in the day when we had three high schools, we used to have a lot more vocational careers that were part of Lorraine City Schools. Nowadays, we only have 14, 14 actual curriculum that you could take. My question is, is that I know a lot of times you guys are focusing now on the college, but the city of Lorraine, a lot of the people that live here are actually a lot of blue collar workers. And right now, the construction field is one of the fields out there that are looking for a lot, a lot of workers. My two oldest ones are going to college for the medical field. My youngest one, unfortunately, he's not into that type of thing. He is more in the construction aspect. And next year, he's supposed to be a ninth grader, but the city of Lorraine only offers one thing for construction, which is heating and air. Where, the question I really have is, why cannot the city be invited to go to JBS where he has more of an opportunity, where there's like construction, there's carpentry, electrical, heating, plumbing, masonry, things of that nature? I think if you guys opened up more to that for the school system here for the kids, they would do a lot better in, in real life. I know personally, I'm a small business owner, and it's so hard to find good help these days for it. So that's one thing I have. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Before we close, is there anyone else? Because, okay, we got one that's coming right behind you here, and then we'll get. Yes, come on. And Ms. Rota, you can start coming this way so you can get to the microphone again so when she's done.
I'm Mary Miller. I live on East 34th Street in South Lorraine. I have a few questions. Kind of going back to, I believe, the last board meeting, we were asking if the property tax money that was supposed to be put into an account from the CEO, Mr. Hardy, if it was designated to, or hasn't been yet. I know it wasn't then, like designated to, goes to something.
It, it just goes right back into the general fund?
Okay. Because we were just curious. We thought, well, maybe that could be used for busing. We don't know if the busing arrangements have been made for graduation, so just a thought. Also, I know we discussed maybe a couple meetings prior to that, the, the extra construction money that was maybe to be go, to go to build the atrium, or office, or, I'm sorry, conference space. But we thought maybe it might be a good idea to consider expanding the gym for graduation in the future. We also have some youth games that we've been to the last couple of years, and we can't pull the bleachers out, because you're using all the courts. So it might just be an idea that we thought we'd bring up. I don't know if this can be answered here. I can save it for another time, but I'll bring it up. We know that it was brought up that perhaps the original, or the members of the A D C prior to the swearing in of Mrs. Xander, were they ever sworn in? And if not, I mean, would the contract or any decisions they made even be viable? Just kind of a question. I don't know.
Want to field that one, Diane?
I'm not a lawyer.
Right, right. Okay, me neither. So that's kind of where I thought I would address the question, or somebody can find out or get back to me otherwise. Also, we were hoping to find out more about any of the legal options that were brought up in the March meeting of 2018, almost a year ago. We know there were two. The second one being that you can gather petitions and, or signatures on a petition, and then file a no confidence. So we were hoping if anybody can offer us some more advice on that, but we were hoping to go ahead and look into pursuing that, as myself in It Takes a Village.
I think Mr. Kucinich may have brought that up. And I don't know if you can pull the files from that meeting, but I think the things he laid out, or the attorney that laid that out for him, maybe he'd answer that question, but I don't have the answer.
Okay. We just weren't sure if anybody had pursued that avenue, or the first avenue.
I don't think it's been pursued by anybody on this board.
Okay. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, Rota, I have a question. A young lady just finished talking about petitions for no confidence or whatever years ago. If that's the case, I would say to you, and I would be one of the ones that, we need to call the Ohio Department of Education, Mr. De Maria, whoever is in there to explain to people exactly the role of our board, school board, that we elected, and the role of the CEO who they put in here, and what their duties are. I agree, there are a lot of things that need to be done when they're talking about counselors. We very much need counselors in our, kids have no business leaving, going out of middle school, then to high school, and not knowing how many credits they have, what courses they need. And it's happening. We had over, I think it was 100 kids who did not graduate because of the new standards that they have out. Am I right, Mr. Hill?
I don't know, off the top of my head, honestly.
But, I mean, these are the things that are going on, that are happening in our community. It's still out there. Okay. Are we going to do something about this? Are we going to come together? Because I think now it's time for the state to step in and explain. Because here it is. Anyone that needs a copy of my summary of it, our representative, Mr. Ramos, I called, they sent me into House Bill 512, which is in committee, as you know. And if it comes out of committee and goes to that floor, you haven't seen anything yet. Am I correct? Have you seen it, Mr. Ramos? You have. And you know what it, what it can do. You know it is detrimental to our educational system, is it not? Then these are the things that we need to be concerned about. These are the issues that we need to address. And we began, and we need to do it now. Because, see, I can sit here and tell you, I'm one of those who came out of a one-room school in Mississippi, who went through segregated schools. I know the importance of an education, and I know how important it is. And you think about Black History Month, you think about Dr. Martin Luther King, and he probably looking down, shaking his head, and saying, what the heck's going on? Because, see, this is nonsense. And don't say it's not divided out here in Lorraine. In fact, it is. Don't even start to dream about it. It is. But we can stop it. And see, I can't, I can't say anything to me, because take a look at me, I'm international. I have a brother buried in Heidelberg, Germany. I have relatives in Canada, have them in France, so I'm all over the world. And I'm gonna stay here till I leave, but I'll tell you, I'm not gonna shut up. And I'm telling you out there, you better stop it. These kids are watching us, and our children need help. And it's about the kids, not about us. Let's get the state in, and let's straighten it out.
And I'll say to you, Rota, since I've been put in this chair, when Mr. Richardson was in his office still, we did meet, and we did talk several times, and we still communicate. And with the new CEO, with the CEO, I'm sorry, we've talked on a weekly basis since I've been here, and we've met on several of occasions, and we're trying to communicate, because I'm with you. As long as we can do what's best for this community, as long as that's the goal of everyone, that's what we're going to do. And as long as he's the CEO and we're the board, we've got to do what's right by our kids, so.
You got to do what's right about our kids. And no confidence, stuff crap, gotta go.
Drew to share to the mayor.
Yeah. On your point, Ms. Lee, and on your point, Mr. Ballard, I would recommend to the board, before you adjourn, to show that spirit of unity. I think you should take a vote on sending a letter to the CEO and the distress commission requesting a joint meeting. I think that would be an appropriate step to show unity.
Tony?
This is not new. I mean, let me just point out the reality of our situation. Again, since the CEO has been here for two years, he has been invited to our Board of Education meetings, we have tried to meet with him, we've asked for information, and he has blatantly refused that. I mean, we didn't create this division that everybody's talking about. This guy came in, and he could have taken a couple different paths, and he chose a path in which I believe, and Mr. Pickering has the data, and I would say this, that when we are fabricating and misrepresenting data to prove a point, I believe that it is a blatant attack on our educators in this school district to point the finger at them and say, look, we told you, House Bill 70 is saying public education can't educate kids, and you guys are the problem. That's what's going on here. The blatant refusal to give readily available information, not only to this Board of Education, but to Mrs. Xander and anybody else who asked for it, there's something wrong. And I'm not sure what he's hiding, or anybody else is hiding, but we can sit here and sing kumbaya and hold hands and hug it out, but the reality is, we have attempted to meet with this CEO, and he has refused to do that. He refuses to communicate with us. He draw, he drew that line in the sand. We're just dealing with the situation we have. I have kids in this school district. You think I want to sit up here and do something that's gonna jeopardize their future? And let me tell you something, every one of my kids' teachers have been fantastic. My kids that have went through this school district have learned a lot by a lot of great teachers. I taught with some of these folks. I know what they do. I know what they're about. I know how they act in their classroom, and what they truly are here for. These educators do an excellent job. And this CEO and its administration has put out a full-out attack on our teachers, the way they're evaluating them. There was a teacher that got visited 10 different times by her dean, or whoever these people are, 10 different times in a single day. If that's not bullying, I don't know what bullying is. When we are looking for reasons to say you're not educating our children, there's a problem here. So we can paint the narrative any way we want. The reality is what it is. And I'm telling you right now, this current situation in Lorraine City Schools under this CEO is a devastation. The irreparable harm that these unqualified incompetent people have done to Lorraine City Schools and our students is not gonna be, it's unreparable. It truly is. Think back, Ms. Lee, I'm speaking.
You're wrong. You're speaking.
No, I'm not wrong. I've been dealing with this for the last two years. And we can't beat House Bill 70, and legislation is legislation, but that's not where we're at.
It's been going on for a long time, and you didn't deal with things when we bothered them.
Until you start dealing with the actual root of the problem that our children are dealing with, and the barriers they face before they step into our classrooms.
Sorry, Ms. Lee. We're gonna need you to.
How long is that? I'll let it go.
No, no, no. You can respond, but let him finish, because like we said, we didn't interrupt. So please let him finish his thought.
You can blame the teachers, you can blame the system.
I'm not blaming anyone. I am blaming the whole dag gone system.
I'll let you speak.
Yes, I'm blaming the whole system, going back. I can take you back 20 years. What did it do when we said it? When we called and asked about meaning to stop this House Bill 70 and to stop other things, no one responded. I talked to you. He's like, I talked to you. Did I not? The other night, you did. It's all gone right. And I told you, it's not that. Stop throwing stones. That's why, that's why.
There's no stones being thrown. The facts are the facts. The facts are the facts.
What is the mandate of the CEO by the state of Ohio under House Bill 70? What is the mandate? Do we know?
That's irrelevant. It's irrelevant. It's irrelevant to the current situation that we're faced with. It has nothing to do with what is going on in our classrooms and our buildings, nothing to do with it.
Instead of coming together, Tony. And I'm telling you.
Not the path I chose. It's not the path I chose, Ms. Lee.
But I'm telling you, don't do it, because he's here. You let it come out. And here's some, do you have a deposit or five twelve change? You have it? You read it?
Is that a copy? I'll take your copy, sure.
And have you seen it?
I read it over, and you shared it with me.
And now, is that, well, is that more detrimental than what you're sitting here talking about now?
It possibly could be, if it happens.
I know what I'm saying. Tony, you know. You've seen it.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, then let's stop the crap. Let's show, you're, you're, you're going after a person. Let's not deal with the person that's, let's deal with the issue.
Nobody's going after.
This morning, response.
Nobody's going after anybody. We are clearly pointing out the facts of what's going on in our school buildings. You can't make this stuff up, Ms. Lee. You can't make it up.
I just have been not being able to graduate.
In the great words of Amanda Van Allen, it is bizarre at its finest. I mean, it is, it is just unreal.
You're coming up the wall. You got them here, you went out, you found you them out, and you brought them in. Okay, they're all sitting out here. They all have kids. How many of their kids are in this district? How many of them have to live with what these people live with in this district? Very few of them. So what about that? We're, I'm concerned about having good teachers, good students, parents. Let's deal with that. No, I'm not, I am not about to see us attacked. We didn't attack the others that were in here doing, and weren't doing the doggone thing. This district didn't get like this overnight. It was like when you came in. Now, am I right? Don't do it. Come together, and let's work on what is really relevant. Let's get the state, I, I, and I'm here, and I'm right now telling you, I'm getting ready to combat it. Because they need to come in here. They need to come in here and let you know, let us know, let the teachers know, let everyone, the employees know, and our city know what's going on. We sit on the doggone jaw, and what we doing, just letting it rot. Am I right? We've got a lot of things to do in Lorraine. Lorraine is a jewel, and it could be sparkling. If we stop this nonsense, don't do it. Yeah, well, they'll come in. We'll get them in. Let's come together, let's stop this crap. It's not gonna do us any good, and it's not gonna do any good for our children.
Ms. Johnson?
Today, I think we've had discourse that has been what everybody needed. We needed to get this out in the air. We needed to have discussion on all of this. But we can't continue just to talk, and it goes nowhere. So what we need, and I would suggest this over and over, a retreat where the CEO is definitely coming. over and over, a retreat where the CEO is definitely coming. The commission will be there. The Board of Education could be there. The president of our union for the teachers will be there, and perhaps they could designate a parent, or maybe one or two, to come, and let's sit down, and let's get this unscrambled. Because everybody that says something has a valid point, because they're seeing it from their point of view. And you can't tell them that they're wrong when they see that, what's going on. So the person that goes into the schools, they see one thing. The other person, and I didn't know that, how the teachers are feeling. I found that out recently, and I was devastated, because teachers cannot be emotionally traumatized and work. That is not what's going to happen. If we don't have enough counselors, that's another point. But we need to sit down and draw up a plan, step by step by step, and check it off as we complete it. But if we keep just talking about it and airing our differences, then nothing's gonna happen. We're gonna stay right here.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lyndi Gillum, and I'm a product of Lorain City Schools, but I'm also a retired teacher. And everything that I've heard tonight could be solved very easily. People want answers. The community wants answers. And it seems like the person who holds the answers is not speaking to the community, creating a controversy that I don't think even should exist. So I truly believe that a lot of this can be handled quickly if the CEO would step up and answer the questions that the public has, and not submit them to an email address, and then perhaps get published in Titan Touchpoints, is that the newsletter? It's that easy. And I'm not sure why everything has to be so controversial, when all he needs to do is be transparent, answer the questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, as I am a little bit apprehensive about what I'm going to say. First, for a point of clarity, Ms. Rice, was it the Three Stooges?
Three Musketeers.
Three Musketeers. Was I one of the Musketeers you were speaking of? It's just a question.
Listen, I'm still waiting on the ladder. I know you sent it by mail train, right? It's been like five months. You guys owe the NAACP...
I ask a simple question. I'm sorry. Was I one of the Musketeers you were speaking of? Okay, so, and I want to be really clear, because normally, I think that elected folks, we just take the hits when they come. And that's what we do. We should do that. I am clearly, for the record, not speaking with any regards to the NAACP, an institution that I respect. However, when it comes to E. Jean Rice, I have probably not been disrespected by anyone as much as I have been by Ms. Rice. You sit in our... No, 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 I'm not doing this for applause, because you say this. You sit in our meetings, you laugh, you talk when other people are talking, you're disrespectful, you disrespect our meetings and our guests. Gentlemen behind, you kept saying, "Shh, shh." So for me, personally, I'm simply not going to any longer let you say the things that you say without responding back to you. So I greatly respect the NAACP. The way that you have talked about my peer board members, the disrespect that you have shown verbally proudly is unacceptable. And so if you think that we're just gonna sit and allow you, because at one stage, you know, we would use these things, well, we respect our elders. Well, we're now old enough to die of natural causes. So as far as that, that I was taught to do, we're no longer there anymore. And if you think that you're gonna walk into our board meeting, sit there and be disrespectful, laugh, talk, giggle, heckle, all that stuff, without anyone saying anything, that's not gonna continue to happen. And you can call me a Musketeer, or whatever you wish. If you think that making that statement, your opening statement, was respectful, or reasonable, or appropriate, I disagree. And I would suggest that most folks would disagree. That is not the way in which I would think the NAACP would expect this leadership to engage. Now, we can disagree about a lot of stuff. We don't have to agree on everything. But that approach, I don't think is reasonable. And so I wanted to make sure that I put that out there on the record, so that everybody could hear. They'd have to hear about, it was said like this, or that this is exactly what I'm stating. We always respect you when you were at our meeting. We never, but if this is what disrespect is, you placed a challenge, you made some statements, and so I am responding. I apologize to my board members for making such a statement that typically we do not do as far as our protocol, but it's unacceptable and unreasonable.
I'm not gonna debate, but I guess you forgot about two or three months ago, what you said to Ms. Rice. You forgot that, right?
What is it? Remind me, please.
It was a personal attack on me. Yes, you did.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is for the treasurer. Hi, I'm Jenny Malloy. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Frankenstein. Since our SLO, which is part of our growth, which is our growth measure, is attendance, is there any additional money going in to help with the attendance problems? Like additional people going out to the houses, asking why? Additional people, you know, asking questions like, "Why aren't you here?" Because right now, it's there, but we don't know how this is being, if it's being addressed. We're told to put a code in the computer. Is there any additional money going in to help with resources? See, I'm a kindergarten teacher, so I can't even take my students to court. And that's gonna be my growth measure. The student's attendance is going to be how I'm rated. That's like going to the dentist, and he tells you to brush your teeth twice a day. He shows up two years later, and that dentist is fired, because he didn't listen to him. I mean, I can't teach a child unless they're here at school.
As you see, I'm letting this kind of linger to make sure we're covering everybody's questions, because we don't want it to be said that we don't allow you to talk at our meetings. But if there's, is there anyone else? Any closing remarks, sir?
Can Josh give us a rundown of the money situation and about what's going on? Because she was talking about, I understand, about counselors. Do we have money in the budget or so for counselors and other things? Do we have, or what's going on with the money?
Well, we have the budget for the year, and obviously, that includes current staffing levels. So to specifically speak to whether we have additional money for counselors, of course. I mean, we have money available. The pot of money is the pot of money. You know, if we spend it now or we spend it later, we're taking in funds. So it's my job to make sure that there are funds available for the direction of, you know, previously the superintendent, now the CEO, superintendent in board, now CEO. It's not my job to make the decision. But yeah, is there funds available? Sure. It's the same pot of money that would be available, you know, whether we spend it, like I said, spend it now on additional counselors, spend it later. It's all documented in the five-year forecast in regards to the funds that are available, projected costs, things like that. But as to whether or not, you know, specifically for that, yeah, there's money available. We've got, we're solving through the end of 2021. So we have funds. Yeah, whether they're steered in one direction or another, that's not my decision, per se.
Any closing remarks?
Can I comment on this?
Please.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment on the counselor situation. Mr. Hardy and I had this conversation, I believe, in the fall. And I'm not so sure he didn't put one or at least one more on. I think at the time, when we had the conversation, there was four. Okay, is there any more than four now? Could I ask?
Going down the list of their offices. I think there's four.
Okay. When there was two high schools, when there was two high schools, we had four counselors at Admiral King's.
Five.
Five?
Five, yeah.
Okay, and we had four at Southview. So we put the schools together, and...
We lost one.
And I think we did lose one. And I had had this, and Mr. Hardy said he would look into it. And, you know, I can't say that anything has improved, but I did have that conversation with him, because I thought, I didn't think anybody should be handling 500 kids a year. And I know that there is one counselor that handles, you know, most of them have like a class, you know, like, say, if there's four or 500 kids, and still, that's too much. But every one of them should be seen, you know, every year, at least. I mean, planning is planning, and they need to know where they stand and where they're going. But I mean, I think that's a good, I think that's a good thing to ask for.
What about middle school counselors?
Okay, we're gonna close the floor, guys. Any closing remarks, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, to the chair, I would just say, my last comment, and to what Mr. DiMakia said, I think you are echoing the concerns of the community. You're echoing many of my concerns about what's going on. But I still think, and I'm aware of past invites and what have you, I'm aware of not being required to attend. I say the board puts it on the record. If you do tomorrow, I will send from my office to every Distress Commission member and CEO, Hardy, my desire to see it, and my plan to be in attendance at that meeting of both coming together and how it is long overdue. To Ms. Lee's point, now that the new governor and his administration are in place, you can be certain that I will be active down there, explaining the situation in Lorain City Schools and what my views are. And I will let them know of my request to have this joint meeting, and how imperative it is to get everybody together, and I would hope that they would support that position.
Chair, then I would make a motion that, as per the recommendation of the mayor, that we issue a formal invitation to the commission, to the CEO, and that you would then get with the chair, whoever the chair is, that's gonna be interesting, to set the agenda up for that joint meeting.
Support.
So we need to walk that on first.
That's the walk-on vote there.
There's a walk-on vote, then.
Yeah. I supported the motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. DiMakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
And I would now motion to issue the letter of invitation.
Support.
Roll call.
Absolutely.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. DiMakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
And just as a courtesy to our guests, you guys have any closing remarks, sir? You guys agree?
I would just like to thank the invite. Obviously, Diane and I felt it was important to be here, and that's why we're here. We were disappointed that the academic distress commission meeting that was canceled last week, and we want to thank the people that reached out to us, because they wanted questions answered. And I think one of the things that Diane and I both wanted to do when we met with some parents was the fact that we wanted to be there to answer questions. And I think tonight, even though there was some tense dialogue, the fact that people were able to get up, ask some questions, and, you know, hopefully got some answers. Maybe they didn't get the answers that they wanted. But the fact that we're here to basically move Lorain City Schools forward, move it forward in a positive way. And I know, you know, Diane and I are in agreement on the fact that that's what we're here to do. You know, as she said, I said, we've had our children, our own children, so they've gone to Lorain City Schools, okay? And they didn't have to go here. We made a choice to educate our kids in Lorain, and that's important to us. I work here. I've been here 28 years. This is my home, in terms of, you know, I care about the community. So we just want to make sure that this community moves forward in a positive light. So thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
And yes, thank you for coming out and listening and being a part of the conversations this evening. I just want to really emphasize that what I've been saying from the beginning, my position on the academic distress commission is that I will be very persistent in searching for the truth and the facts of what's occurring in the district currently. And I am hoping that Mr. Hardy and his administration will embrace my desire to be helpful. Again, I can't help if I don't know baseline information to help the district move forward. I have a lot of background knowledge, and I can be very helpful in designing programs and bringing people together. But we've all got to come together, and we've all got to be able to agree to do that. And holding meetings to once a month for 45 minutes, or once a quarter, it's not enough. There's urgency in this community now. And the quicker we come together, the more we can make things happen. And that needs to be agreed upon by all parties. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Congratulations, and an exceptional job of navigating a very difficult meeting. This was our new chair's first meeting, and it's quite a bit to navigate, so you did a great job.
Thank you, sir. And for the record, I will add that we did send out a formal invite to all of the ADC commissioners, and some of them did respond that they would not be able to make it tonight, but they all did respond. So just for the record. So our next meeting is February 12 at 5:00, right here, and we will send out that formal invite. And I need a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Support. Any support? You support their adjourn?
So...
Roll call.
Mr. DiMakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorain City Schools TV20 WLCS.